We're gonna start the, complete the whole meeting, uh, so we can move on here. Call the Village Johnsburg Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 8:31. And the roll. Trustee, or, Special Coordinator Quinn. Chief Primmel. Trustee Morris. Trustee Hagan.
Here.
Trustee Salanias. Trustee Van Amon. Trustee Falk. Trustee.
Here.
And Assistant Village Administrator Almontani.
Almontani.
Is that still there? And our Village Attorney.
Smoravich.
Smoravich. Did you? Okay, so. I don't think we have to do the pledge again. We did that once tonight. Any from the floor comments? From the floor comments? Okay, with there being an approval of the minutes, can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion?
We have a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Trustee Letzger. Discussion on the motion, we'll start with Trustee Van Amon. Anything you wanna discuss?
Hi. Oh, wait, oh, yes. No, nothing to discuss.
We'll give you a few minutes, get going here.
Thank you. I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? On the roll. Trustee Morris.
Hi.
Trustee Hagan.
Hi.
Trustee Salanias. Trustee Van Amon.
Hi.
Trustee Falk.
Hi.
Trustee Letzger. Motion carried. Chairman's report, I'm going to waive my reports for tonight, 'cause I didn't call and get anything else on the agenda. Committee reports, let's start with community affairs, because that's coming up real shortly here.
Yeah, so, before, uh, before I dive into Celebration the Park, I just wanted to go on record. As residents, and everyone's been seeing Sunnyside, uh, move forward with completion, there's still a lot more stuff to come with new playground equipment and everything else, but, uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that that was funded by a extremely generous donation, who wishes to be, remain anonymous. I've had several people ask me about the cost, and I just wanted to go on record and say that was from a generous donation. And we're looking forward to completion, and I saw the new courts being used three or four days in a row this past week, so. Looking forward to that. So, I just wanted to say that, but now we get Celebration the Park.
They're fully operational?
They'll pick up a court, but.
Not fully operated.
And you took the, you took the padlock off, did you?
I did, I did take the padlock off, but they're not, it's not fully restored around the surrounding.
Oh.
There's a bad girl.
The courts themselves are.
The courts are cured and ready for play.
So, and the nets for the volleyball and stuff have been ordered. Playground equipment's still being chosen by the individual that did the donation.
That'll probably be a next year installation?
For the playground equipment, yeah.
Where's the playground equipment going and?
It's gonna go by the pavilion here.
Oh, okay.
So, moved away from, towards the soccer fields and stuff, so if you have kids while they're practicing, parents can keep an eye on it instead of over here. So, it got relocated to that area.
That go on the other side of the ditch there, or?
Our side of the creek.
Yeah, this side.
Village Hall side of the creek.
Kinda where the, you see the one that's over there now?
Yeah.
By the bridge?
Yeah.
Between that and the pavilion, I believe.
Oh, okay.
The idea that the parents can watch the kids play soccer, and if they have kids that are playing on it.
In the parking lot?
That's like a phase two that we looked at later on.
Okay, so that's not part of this?
Maybe a dumb question, are we getting cameras on this stuff?
What?
So, this is a dumb question, but, the cameras we have in the building, will they pick up, won't they?
Uh, the camera on the corner of the building won't pick the overall area, but in regards to identifying anything, or like a suspect?
No, because we had that problem with the old, uh, playground. Just, how do I ask?
I could, I could see the pavilion, uh, the illumination of the light from the broadcasting of the surrounding, but if there's any kind of vandalism after guard, you will not be able to identify a suspect.
Just ask.
They're all hardwired.
Cameras are. Our cameras are hardwired.
Infrared?
Yeah, it's got a low, low lens.
Right there.
It's not the hand, is it?
All right, and Celebration the Park, so, one of our bigger events coming up, uh, Hiller Park, starts at 5:00, October 4th. Um, with the help of our, uh, Community Affairs Committee. Uh, Mini, right there, myself, uh, we've moved forward quite a bit. Lot of the vendors, 301 is coming back, Java, uh, we've had several of the school clubs and sports teams that will be selling a variety of different foods and drinks there. Uh, the Booster Club is also helping, and they've all been coordinating extremely well in the last week to make sure that there's no duplicates of stuff sold there, so each club and sport can try and profit the most in that event. The band is secured, the, um, fireworks has been secured. Uh, we'll have that bonfire as usual, we'll have the transport for residents there. We will have games, bounce houses with workers to monitor it. I got a mini blacklight beanbag for some of the older kids and adults, and then lots of little games, pumpkin decorating, face painter and things like that for the small kids, so. Um, everything's moving forward, and Lions Club as well with the beer and seltzer truck. So, hopefully everyone can attend. Look forward to seeing you guys there, and I appreciate all the help from the coaches, uh, from Java Booster Club, Lions Club, for making all the food and drink available to us.
Any questions or discussions for Mike?
5:00. October 4th.
What time did you need us there to set up?
Um, normally, I would tell you, don't worry about it, but actually, we're gonna, we used to do a setup in the morning, you know, and then later on, I'm usually there. Um, we decided just to do it all at once. We did secure decorations, uh, Mr. Calhoun donated all the corn stocks, and so we'll have more than normal to make it look a little more festive for fall. So, um, if there are any volunteers that are available, the complete setup, besides the big structures like the tents and porta-potties and stuff, will happen around 2:30, uh, that day. Even if it's a small, I gotta get the back, the blacklight beanbag thing set up and the decorations and things like that, so I do have bunch of committee members that are doing it, but they're also volunteering their time to work certain seconds of it during the event. So, as far as setup goes, anyone that wants to show up is more than willing, or more, if they're more than willing, I appreciate it, so. It's not mandatory, but I could use a, an hour help, I'm sure.
Are you getting the bags and stuff over there at the box, is?
I'm getting them from the community club that day, or the day before.
You need a trailer, or?
Um, no, we have one.
You got one?
Yeah, thank you though.
Okay, any other discussions or questions for Mike?
Well, um, I'm not, I don't know if it's appropriate here, but like that jacked vending, I know we talked about that in Hiller Park. Would an update here be okay, or do we have an update on that?
I have not received an update. I gave him a reply in regards to the status of, in regards to the action originally just being tabled. Is that the right terminology? In regards to a new proposal coming back from?
From them?
Two, two of the gentlemen were on there, so I'm assuming one is Mr. George Senior, and the other one would be Mr. Jack, this, uh, unless I got the names mixed up.
No, yeah, I, I, I follow that, yeah.
Based on our last discussion, a lot of it was gonna be determined to have just a general fee as a donation, you know, or instead of percentage, that could get messy. And they seem to be on board with it, maybe just haven't gotten back to us yet, so.
And that fee would cover, we said, like, $300 to $500 a year to cover potential electric use?
Depending on the high efficiency rating, as low as $338, uh, ComEd replied back with, and as high as $401.
So, there's really no?
At 4,400 kilowatts, they're predicting anywhere between $480 and $488.
And that's no benefit to the village, that's just sort of the cost?
Cover the cost, yeah.
Yeah, based on the efficiency of what unit. If they reply back with what unit they're possibly thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, second.
Fifty, fifty for incidental, I mean, there's, I'm sure you may have.
But we said $50 a month that would cover, right, even on the high end, and. So where we wait, so for them, we're waiting for them to come back with?
Efficiency rating, or what they're thinking on their actual vending machine, and then we can give you a pretty, almost approximate, but exact determination on.
Just the same, the same rating you get when you buy a refrigerator or something, you have, like, what it's cost to run.
Because they were exploring different options on what they were gonna do, and to start off, especially at Hiller Park, they were looking at a pretty high-end, nice one that would be able to do drinks and, uh, non-perishable goods at the same time, so.
So that, so, if they, they get us that information, do we get, do we know that and the dollar amount, we give potential vote on that meeting to approve that and get it going?
We could have a discussion on it, yeah.
Okay.
And then maybe vote on it based on that discussion, when we know how much the, the, it's gonna take to run them.
Okay.
And if they wanted to, because when we first read that, they wanted to make a donation from the profits, is what they understood, so.
Simpler is better.
Huh?
Simpler is better.
Yeah, just one number and we done with it.
So I think, and, so maybe our, is it October 8th is our next?
7th.
October 7th is our next meeting? They will invite Jackson up here to speak and be part of the process.
Be good.
Yeah.
Well, I think he should get in contact with any person of any kind of his homework.
Oh, yeah, I'd hope that he has everything. By that time, we're good to go to a discussion and vote, but maybe just him sharing.
New business, pretty young entrepreneurs in the back there.
We'll send them to Jason for fingerprinting.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for that.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Michael?
Nope.
Good. Josh?
Yes, you guys should have received, uh, our concept plan. About the incubator small shops that we're looking at putting at Rescue Squad Park. So, really what I'm looking for at this point, again, we have, we have our plan, we have kind of an idea of what we want it to look like, so I just, again, wanna get consent, so that we can start putting together some, some real numbers on these things. So, we're, in the plan that we have, we're looking at putting, putting them kind of by the pavilion, and that area, again, well, I, I think it will, it will allow us to increase traffic through there. I think it's already a business district that we wanna see get used even further as a business district. I think it's an underutilized park, just generally, so that'll, that'll be another opportunity. And that area also then allows us to expand if, if we see that it's, it's working well. So, that plan includes two 20-foot containers, so it would be four retail units. We would divide each of them in two. Again, we'll, we'll work, I've, I've had conversations with, uh, the school, the vocational program at the school. I had conversations with just some other businesses about doing sponsorships and things. So, again, it will be, uh, an effort to try and keep the cost to the village as minimal as possible. Well, we're, our intention would be for Public Works to, to prep the site, so we wouldn't have to bring anybody in. We would have to move around some electrical, so that would be an expense that we would have to, uh, bring in there. It's close, but it's not at that site, so. But, um, again, we're at the point that we, we have a good, uh, good idea of what we want it to look like, so we just, we wanna start putting some numbers on it and see where we end up. And then we'll also utilize that as an opportunity. I know in talking to some people about how McHenry did theirs, they were, not only did they secure quite a bit of labor, but they also secured quite a bit of donations from other businesses, so.
Wasn't the chamber, did they?
So, the, so the way that they work, and Huntley, they're about to open up theirs, they, I think they just finished it, but they're still, they're gonna wait until, like, their Christmas season to open it for the first time, and then next year will be their first full year. But, uh, yeah, it, it, again, it'll, it'll be. How they do it is that the McHenry Chamber essentially runs all the leases, and as part of the lease, a requirement for those businesses is to participate in, like, business training, right? A couple of business training classes that are put on by Chamber members. So, I mean, again, these, we're, we're looking to attract pretty small businesses here, so, and with the idea that they start there, they, they get themselves settled, they say that they have a plan that works, so then they can look at expanding into other spaces around town, and, and, again, expanding their space, getting, getting to real leases, so. It's, I would like Java to participate in it, simply because, again, that's experience that we can, we can utilize for these, these businesses, and it'll take that day-to-day work off of the village, right? Take it off the staff, so. Yeah, I would like, I would like Java to work in conjunction with the village.
Would they be contributing financially to it also, Java?
Uh, probably, at least not as I envision it. Yeah, so that is, again, they'll be rentals, I mean, these people will be renting, um, these spaces from the village, so that money will come to the village.
The concept plan is just to have containers that look like this?
I mean, they will be dressed up, they're not gonna be like industrial containers rolling off a ship.
Well, that's not what we see here.
Now, look at the one above, they're built out, and they kind of fold.
Yeah, the little images, again, this is just something that I have.
So, we're gonna have something with some architectural?
It will be, again, I showed visuals before. I can send them out again, but, yeah, you can, you can really take these containers and make them look like nice retail shops. And, again, they are not permanent structures, so if, if for some reason it didn't work out, we can move them. If we decided a different location would be better, we can move them. We can add more without too much hassle, so.
Could you send me those pictures? Because we've had conversations in the ordinance committee about this, and there's been quite a bit of talk. Some of these other towns that have done this, they didn't dress them up, and it looks really bad.
The containers, isn't it?
So, we had talked when this first came up about dressing the front up, but it, but by the time you do that, would it be cheaper to just get a nice shed versus the container and then adding all this extra to it? I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, like the ones at McHenry, a few of us went over there, and they're just containers painted.
Well, that's, so that's not the small shops, that is, that is a business that rents, what do they do? I think one of them is the kayak rental company, and the other one is like a concessions company, so that's not part of their.
Some of them would.
Well, a lot of them, that I saw, they looked like they were just big sheds that they spruced up.
So, those, if you're talking about the small shops themselves, in, in McHenry's River Park, those are all stick build, those are not sheds.
They are stick.
They did, they did look into that. They ended up, the, the cost that they calculated from buying a shed, placing it, and then doing the modifications they needed to do to make it look nice, it ended up being less expensive to just build a new scratch shed, so. But they did that with a lot of, either donated labor from local contractors, or the McHenry School offered a lot of.
I think the building streets are, our village don't fix stick buildings.
I would just like, if you have those, I'd like to see it, and then we also have to talk about, uh, making an amendment, if that is the direction that we're gonna go, because we do not allow containers.
Right, yeah, so we'll have to, that's, that's in my notes here, too, that we would have to update ordinances to allow containers within the village under specific circumstances, you know, for village use, so, yeah.
You had some renderings, I think we'd like to see the renderings of what they look like, when we dress them up. Because I know the Rescue Squad that donated, bought the land, donated, and did the pavilion and everything else. There's enough people in town that would be very upset if it's just a container out there, that they're not dressed up.
Yeah, well, again, I mean, we're not gonna.
No, I'm just asking you all of these.
Because I know who will get the first one, Vinnie.
No. How much are those? The containers?
Yeah.
Like, unmodified, again, you can buy them in any range, but just like, like, a previous, a used, unmodified container is, what do we look, Vinnie? Like $7,000, $5,000 to $7,000?
If you go new, they come up available at auctions and ports in regards to substantially less, that would include some modifications, so you could probably say every 20-foot model's probably gonna rough you anywhere between $5,500 and $7,500 to have window fabrication, door access. And then from there, the material list can go up, but. Movable was the key feature in regards to if this doesn't work or if this expands.
And, and unique, right? I mean, again, that's, it's something different.
Do we have some bathrooms or porta-potties over there?
Yeah, I mean, well, so.
Maybe moved over there or something?
Right.
Modified there?
Yeah, I don't, I, these, these units are not intended to have water, they'll have electrical.
But that's another thing we would have to look into, getting on that end of the park, I think we.
It is, um, yeah, there's, it's noted on there. It's right by the road, is where we could tap from, because the net's what feeds the lights down by the pavilion there, too, so we can tap from that area and get down to us.
Yeah, one more question. Why do we decide 100% that's, we wanted to go to that park and not here?
We, again, we've had a lot of discussion about that at, at our committee, and it's, the problem with here is that it is very event-specific, right? There's, there's not very much traffic that just comes through.
But there's more traffic here than there is at the other park, and.
And again, the Johnsburg.
Well.
Parking, yeah, so parking is another thing that we talked about, and again, there is a longer-range plan that I don't really wanna get too much into detail, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna change the price of any properties that we would potentially look at at some point in the future, so. But, yes, that is, again, there is limited parking there now.
I'm just telling you what my committee's come up with, and I'm asking a question.
Right.
Because they asked me to, so.
But, but in terms of traffic, right? Down here, it's gonna be too far away from the road, so you're, you're then relying on these events like soccer that are filling the park. But then, most of the other time, when there's nothing going on there, there's not a ton of people that are, that are coming through, right? Whereas over, over at Rescue Squad, it's more of our downtown business location that we're really trying to, you know, build up. And there's, there's a lot more transient traffic going through with half-times there, with, um, really, again, there's not a ton of businesses, but with the, the new restaurant coming in, that's gonna be another opportunity, and we wanna make it walkable from one location to another. And we're hoping that by increasing that walking traffic, that that'll encourage others to also see that as a walkable downtown that will then spur more development, right? Converting possibly some of these homes into businesses, getting some of these businesses that have kind of lingered there for a while without much development to see the potential, so. We just, I mean, our, our, resounding, resoundingly, our committee felt that that was, that was the ideal location. That's where our vision really sees that, that taking place.
So, you picture people walking down through the, from half-times over there, or, I mean?
Again, right along, it's right along Golf Car Path that goes through the park.
Yeah.
Right, so you're pulling people from Church Street. It's, it has sidewalks, it has pedestrian lights already. It, uh.
How many parking spots do we have on the other side of our dome?
There's parking spots right there.
Yeah, right by the pavilion, I think there's only maybe a dozen there.
14, plus 188.
And I don't think you would fill them up. I mean, I, I don't think people are, well, maybe you will park there, but I don't.
The problem is, is that, again, if you have a, if you have a location that needs to be a destination location, it gets difficult to draw people out, if that's all that's there. Whereas if you have something that is kind of, again, in-between or amongst other activity, constant activity, then people see, oh, let's just take a walk over there, right? They get it, they get done with dinner and half-times, and they wanna take a walk through the park, but let's just take a walk over there and see what's going on, right? That's the, that's the type of traffic that we really want and need to draw from, versus people saying, okay, I wanna go to this small shop that's here, I have to drive to the park, park, walk out, right? And then get my thing and leave, so.
Well, I think Jamie's thing is that you have a lot more activity in this park than.
You do, but you have pockets of activity, right? You have activity centered around events, but then, for the rest of the time, there's really not much, not much happening, so.
And how would we? I, I understand what you're thinking, and I, I think it's great, I think it's fantastic. I just don't know if you're gonna get the throughput there. Even, let's just say, an event here, look at tonight, that parking lot was packed. So, if there were shops here, you have 50 people walking in front of it versus the opportunity to get 50 people at the other place. But I understand the downtown thing, but how many businesses downtown are, and it's halftime?
Well, I know, but go out there now, and it's pitch black.
Correct.
Right, I mean, you're not gonna wanna create a business center when there's, when there's not anything else going on, most of the time.
Well, what do you figure the hours, operation would be?
I'd have to, I'd have to look back and remember what they do. I'm pretty sure that they are open, that they're required to be open Thursday to Sunday, like, until 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. Maybe later, maybe 9:00 p.m. I'd have to look back in my notes. But there, again, we would, we would kind of set similar required hours, um, centered around weekends.
Totally, also, they are movable, so if there was to work there, we could.
True.
And I think it's great.
And that's the other thing, that's the other thing, is, right, we, I mean, conceivably, we, we spruce up these containers, and they have a good resale value. Because they can still be picked up and moved somewhere else as a retail container, and you, you recapture whatever additional cost you have in. Right, you can't do that with a stick build.
You can build a stick-built building, you can still move it. If you build it, then they move.
You should build it, they will cut it.
I think it's the best spot for them.
Yeah, that's, we, we talked, I, I know, I know that there was.
I don't know, I'm like this.
That they were thinking about that. We talked about it, we talked about it a lot.
Because of the walk.
And I, I, I see your point, for sure, right? I get it, is there, like, tonight, right?
You're gonna get, the only people that are gonna.
But they will secure for that. And as soon as that's done, then they're out.
This is more responsible.
And it's, it's a lot of, you have anything to add to that, Junior?
Well, what I was, is if business incubators, is not a park.
They're waiting for kids, so.
It's intended to incubate new businesses in the downtown areas, so somebody will have a fledgling shot.
I totally, I totally want to understand that.
So, it was really important for us to have this at the Softlands Field, Bill and Ben's Softlands Field, all the events that Community Affairs has in, in Rescue Squad Park to draw the crowds. The, in, in the components of the golf carts going by there, which is huge in our town, so. I mean, it's just, we want it to be in the center of town.
Thoroughfare, that's, that's really, that's the word I was thinking of. We really wanted it to be in a thoroughfare, right? Somewhere where traffic is passing through, that has the capability to stop.
We, we thought about it, we thought about all.
And, and we want, again, that, that park is beautiful, and there's, there's really not too much going on there, so we thought that that would be a nice addition to that park, plus, we want it to be an extension of the events that happen at the community, right?
Yeah.
Is it available? Is it processed?
There's a, that's, I, there was my home concern.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you. So, again, what I, what I would like is, is if we are all comfortable with this, then, then just a simple, hey, that sounds great, let's go to the next step and put some pricing together and see what, uh, what comes next.
Well, maybe there's a chance to get donations, too.
We will absolutely, I know that, um, McHenry secured a lot of donations from, like, Home Depot, it was a big one, so.
Yeah, they got a lot of donations from Home Depot.
Yeah, so, again, that'll be, that'll be our fundraising drive, too, is to try and keep the village, the village's cost minimal. And, you know, again, I think that we have a lot of support from our local businesses also that want to see the downtown grow, so that's gonna be another opportunity for trying to, you know, get sponsorships and have them help us offset some of these costs.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Okay, we're good?
Good.
All right, we'll keep.
Thank you. Go ahead, Scotty.
And, um, just so everyone knows, Fall Brush Pickup started yesterday, and then at the end of the day, Monday, yesterday, the following areas have been completed, it was Highland Prairie, Prairie View Estates, Country Oaks, Cotton Estates, Sunnyside Estates, includes Channel Beach area, like Hayden, Efling, May, Running Brook Farm, and Remington Grove. Today, I know they were on, like, the south side of the bridge, Vinnie?
Chepala Estates, Washington Park, and Villa Lane, Whispering Ridge. The rain has caused some impact in.
some impact in regards to the chipper being clogged sometimes.
Yeah. They have to run real slow and be careful because it's, everything's wet and it's not going to dry out for a while. People are just taking it slow. On the other end, Vinnie, do you have any updates too on Johnsburg Road?
Uh, yes. So Johnsburg Road, they began milling the butt joint on Fairview Avenue in regards to the Church Street aspect. The next look ahead would be in regards to the Class D patching of six inches throughout the area for the next three day plus look ahead. We did have a conversation with the Chief of Police and the school in regards to homecoming parade and rerouting it due to the backup congestion of entering the construction zone and what their overall lay was. But we are on target and scheduled for binder going down on the October 16th timeline. So we are still on track.
Okay. You know what the new route is for the parade?
Yes. So entry points will be off of Spring Grove Road and Church Street, Spring Grove Road and Mary, utilizing all of Jack Anna subdivision and closing off the corridor of said subdivision and Church Street both eastbound and westbound. So they will be traveling eastbound on Church Street, navigating through the west side entrance of Johnsburg Elementary School, and I'm going to say call it the eastbound entrance of Johnsburg Junior High School and looping back on itself exiting towards Church. There's a social media post out there for people to look at, nice little snips, and a new chat program that we utilized and developed in regards to content out there. Who's in this room?
Thank you, Vinnie.
In the audience.
That's all I have.
Thanks, bud. Now, I have one thing I wanted to pass.
Yes.
In regards to the ordinance on noise that has been a big subject lately, the way that the ordinance are written, and I guess I'm just looking for guidance from everyone here. Okay, it says decimal meter, decimal meters or 100 feet. Well, some of the problems that we're incurring when the police officers are called to these places with complaints, we do not have a decimal meter that is fully functional. It is, has not been calibrated in a long time. So I guess my question is, is do we take out the decimal meter or do we purchase one for all of the policemen? So they have it when there is a complaint? Or do we just keep it as 100 feet?
How do you measure that 100 feet?
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to have to have that meter just to be accountable. Okay, well, right now, we don't have one that is operational, so.
So we had one that we found that was operational or no?
We don't know. What do you think about the calibration or the certification for it?
And what kind of dollars are we looking at for?
Last I checked, I want to say five to 600 for one with a calibration tool to make sure that it's calibrated.
So how many would we need? Because you don't mean one for every officer, right?
Theoretically, two, I would say.
One for each shift?
One, one, you would need two to be, because one officer could be on a call over here, unavailable to go to a noise complaint. The other officer would then have one in their car. Otherwise, they'd have to travel to where that officer is, collect that, and then go to the.
Yeah, but you're saying you got two officers on shift, you need two of them, right?
So I'm just looking for a little guidance. Do we look in that direction and keep the ordinance the same way? Or do we get rid of it? So I don't, I don't know which way we go because we're looking at all ordinances one at a time. And this one, since it kind of got some steam.
I think you gotta use the decimal meter because how do you measure it?
It's impartial, right? That's the thing. It's, it's an impartial measurement of the sound.
Sorry.
It's too subjective. You know, we have to have that. That's why I was bringing up. If that's the direction we're going to continue to stay, then we have to purchase at least two of these.
Right. But I thought there were a lot more money and I thought we were talking for every officer, which you only need two because you have two.
Well, if we end up getting a third officer on each shift, then we would need three once that happens. But I'm just trying to keep costs down as much as I can.
I think you have to have them just to, otherwise it's too.
But then they'll have, we'll have to service them quite often and make sure that they comply.
How often do you have to recalibrate it, Chief?
I, that, that I don't know. I'd have to do some research on it. I would assume that it'd be something you would just calibrate at the beginning of each shift.
Have Motorola throw two in. Yeah. That's what we're spending on them. I'll Motorola throw a couple in.
I'm sure they'd be happy to.
We'll just add it to the lease pay.
I mean, I would say probably every couple of years. Like, like we calibrate equipment annually, but that's required as part of our.
Michael, would you know what it, I mean, if you were trying a case?
That's the only way it would hold up, isn't it?
Yeah, so this goes back years. But I had thought that the Lake County Sheriff had a number of noise ordinance violations thrown out because they didn't have a decimal meter. Keep in mind too, that the idea is that we're trying to dampen down nuisance. I'm not sure it's very impressive to a judge, absent the decimal meter, that I was 100 feet away and I could hear a noise. No, I think the judge is going to be very unimpressed with that. The idea is that this is a nuisance affecting someone's quality of life. They're quite enjoying their home, not, you know, something from Gordon here's a hoop. You know, I heard some. No. And so I think that that decimal meter is going to lend objectivity to it. It's going to be more difficult. And then two, I suspect that there may be a situation where the judge says, I don't think a year is good enough. I want it to be more frequent. I want it to be quarterly, to be monthly, every six weeks. It's going to depend on what that judge says. But I think that that's the way to go, rather than trying to impress the judgment's testimony that someone heard a noise 100 linear feet away.
Typically, the manufacturers will recommend a period between calibrations. So.
I mean, we'll get to prices and find out the calibration, how often it has to be calibrated. I just don't want to spend money on something if we're not going to be using it.
And we mean that because here's the thing. I don't, I'm not aware of any of other municipalities doing this because it hasn't been a problem. So I can't tell you, here's what Genoa is doing, here's what Carper is doing, here's what Pinger Grove is doing with restricted noise. No, I can't give you an example and it might be because it's difficult to do and to prosecute. I'm not aware. Chief, do you know of anyone who engages in this? The use of the decimal meter to, right, who uses the decimal meter?
Conservation?
Yeah, for noise offenses.
Yes. We, I provided ordinance committee eight ordinances within McHenry County that actually go in depth in regards to decimal readings, which they're kind of all consistent. And even in regards to vibration activity.
Okay, so are they prosecuting these?
Oh, there's, there's, there's ordinances for sure. For certain, there's ordinances that surround our community. All the other, all the other communities have an ordinance pertaining to this. As far as the enforcement or how they go about enforcement, I would say it's definitely unclear if there's actually any enforcement action being taken. For example, I know, I believe and trust me by heart, I think you probably call this, Lake County Sheriff, right, on the boats, that was an issue with loud boats. One, one year was a, and I think they had one.
That's what I was going to say. McHenry County boats and the Marine, both Marine units have decimal meters to check for exhaust.
If you ask anybody on that sheriff's patrol, I bet they'll tell you that they can enforce it and they don't.
Oh, I've seen them write the text.
Okay, well, I got a whole packet of a guy coming, looking into this, that is going on this because he lives on the river about the speed, because they're saying that they can't force the speed limit and there's a, and anywhere in the United States, it's, there's the first thing that he brought when he was researching this was that you, it's, it's enforceable, excess speed noise is enforceable in any place in the United States. Now, I just got the packet a day or so ago, but there's a group on the river again, that's all excited about the noise, that have talked to the sheriff's boats that are out there and they said, no, they don't even try to enforce it because they can't. Now, I don't know if that's just hearsay, that he's hearing from them, but I mean, these are pretty reputable sources.
Okay, well, then let's find out from McHenry County sheriffs.
Well, I think that's where we should start.
Yeah.
Because if they can enforce it, I mean, we're, we're beating our head against the wall.
And I think to find out what the obstacles are, if there is, because if the judge isn't going to enforce it because the judge thinks this is trivial, you know, and this is part why we have like administrative adjudications, yes, the courts would tend to think that some of these things were trivial. It's not worth their time. It's not someone facing a death sentence. So I think that before there's the expenditure, let's check with the McHenry County Sheriff to see what kind of problems they've experienced trying to get these enforced.
Because the feedback I'm getting from these people on the river that are all upset about it is that they don't even try to enforce it because they can't get it done. But I don't know that. I'm just, this all came about within the last week again. So I don't, Josh, you live on the water. Do you hear all kinds of noise?
I mean, Eddie, why can't they enforce it?
Absolutely nothing. I can see how that would be problematic simply because, again, how do you, is it, is it that these residents are trying to measure the, the, the sound themselves and then reporting it back to the police officers? Right? I mean, how, especially in Marine units, how do you find the person that's, that's doing that? You know, that, I would imagine that's.
I find it pretty good this weekend with the rivershore.
Well.
It's also only 65 decibels. That's, I'm talking 70 decibels. I mean, I'm talking 70 decibels right now. A washing machine was what, 65, Vinnie?
Around that ballpark.
So it's like.
So what is the criteria that you set the decimal level at? I mean, it's got to be...
I don't know. I'm looking at an old ordinance and I'm trying to figure out.
So I mean, you wouldn't be, if it's talking, that, you know, what, what has got to be the level?
Well, according to our ordinance, it's 70.
Which is ridiculous.
So I'm just.
We're at 70 right now.
So, I mean, that's where I'm going with this. We're trying to look at each ordinance as we go. And like I said, unfortunately, we've had complaints and I have to, I have to look at this thing because I have to take care of our residents as well and their concerns. So that's what we're trying to do.
It's 70 at the lot line?
It's 70 decibels from the property line, 100 feet from the property. The ore is very trickery.
It's not all though. Remember, there's, there's other sections of ordinances that it can be any noise at any distance that can be heard that is offensive, okay, which makes it completely arbitrary to the complainant, which.
A lawnmower is more than that.
You know, you could complain with your neighbor having a barbecue. Say, I don't like it. Sign the complaint.
In terms of the course of action, let's start with the sheriff to see what prosecution difficulties they've had. And then two, in terms of objectivity, I think let's start with the IEP A, noise levels. Something objective to start with. And see if anything's listed court.
I just, yeah, that's likely for a little guidance because we don't know which way to go.
And we've got to give a guidance because we don't have that many complaints, really.
No, it's just recently, but we have to get back to these people whether, I, I believe that, you know, the old, I'm not going to say, there's an establishment that was loud and then it started, you know, they're just butting heads, but it doesn't matter.
We've gone through that with the Hunt Club. People that built brand new houses started bitching about the Hunt Club that's been there for 150 years. It's like people that are bitching about that establishment they bought next to it. You don't buy next to it if you don't want to have some noise, you know? That bar's been there 100.
And it doesn't help that the water is there.
Changes are what throw a wrench in that idea, right? Because I remember the Hunt Club one was an issue.
Well, that's not even, they can't change that.
Right, but they were trying to add a day, and that was the issue there. So, but, but yeah, really, we need something that is objective, right? We can't.
It's got to be, it's got to be beneficial to that business owner and the homeowner. Something that's got to be.
There's got to be a win-win.
There's got to be a win-win.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully it'll work itself out now as these things have changed again, but still, just, any ordinance needs, in order for it to have teeth, it just needs to be objective and something that we can say, okay, it either meets or does not meet the criteria. So.
Something that's considerate for everybody.
Right.
Because you got to work it out.
Right. And that's usually a habit.
It can't just be somebody that doesn't like.
But not in this case. In this case, it was bad.
There, there's other, there's other issues with this, just to, so you're aware, okay? I did some research on this as far as coastal problems with water, bodies of water and atmospheric conditions. So the decimal level at, we'll say the site of the sound could be at 70 decibels, could be within compliance of the ordinance. It can increase ore body of water in certain atmospheric conditions. We're extended violation over there. Right? So, so you're complaining here that it's now 80 at their property. So again, is this person purposely violating the, if it's leaving here at 70, it's received there at 80. How do you enforce that? You know what I mean? And that's, again, part of the problem with enforcement.
That's, I'm going to put in a complaint against the trains in Fox Lake.
Yeah, I hear them all night.
I hear them all night too.
But I mean, again, that's, that's, I literally like look at it over the water.
I think it's 12 or 11.
It does, it does carry over the water. It's.
Pretty sure that's federally protected though.
Okay, if you bring a decimal meter, I'm, I'm putting in a complaint against Metro. Norfolk Southern, Norfolk Southern, whoever runs that.
That is the whole problem of this deal because, and, and if it's on the water, I don't think you can stop it either.
It's hard. I mean, again, it depends on where the complaint's coming from.
It's like the big boats now with all this, ski boats and stuff, they got the big speakers. If they're on the water, they can butt down right past your house and blast it. There's not enough to be able to.
We'll start with that. You know, sorry to keep you guys there that late. I just, I didn't know which way to go on this one.
Well, I don't think we have any guidance because we don't know which way to go either.
Start figuring out what's working for others if anything.
Vinnie has looked into all the other ones and it's, they're very similar. There's not a lot of differences.
Yeah, but probably get in contact with them and figure out what.
Okay. We gave you no guidance, Jamie, but can work on it.
We have to find out from, we're going to put something before you guys, but I just wanted to figure out what, which way you guys.
Well, hopefully it would be something that you can come up with that has some teeth to it so we're not dealing with it every.
Oh, yeah. Have everybody go to your house.
That's fine. I love to entertain. I'll be complaining about half times. Would that be hard? No, I would never do that.
Those radios will get used a lot.
Don't, don't, don't build, don't build by a tavern if you don't want to listen to the noise. That's the bottom line with these people. It's been there forever, you know? Doesn't make sense. So anyways, staff reports, Vinnie, I'm sure you got something to say.
Absolutely. I'm going to be real quick. All right. So confirmation with both the Attorney General and the Capital Development Board in regards to this room is identified as a public room. Active listening system, we fall under the exemption in regards that we have no amplified audio at this present time. So the conditions of the assisted listening devices are not mandatory, however encouraged if you would like to move forward with that at this time. Going back to the first contractor that gave us a proposal in regards to it, it is clear, cut, and down to simple terms, wiring mics would be even more costly than the 39,000. Highly likely that it's not even possible with the existing floor and conduit conditions. We would have to pull more extra cat lines and cables. It would have to have prevailing wage for the complexity of the wiring. And in summary, this is the simplest and cleanest route to utilize our Wi-Fi, which we had our Wi-Fi readdressed in regards to our secure network. So it is at full capacity strength right now. We also have an alternate bid from a separate contractor in regards to making our meetings live, utilizing an owl setup to where we can move forward with the live board meetings versus an after the fact recording. Those prices came in just under $4,800 for the higher end of the spectrum, $4,700 on the lower end of the spectrum, and additional fiber optics to increase Wi-Fi capacity for both the public and the private security. And I can share all these proposals with you, just under $1,200. So in summary, if I would be granted honor about $5,000, I can make our board meetings live if that is your request.
Okay, discussion?
Assistant lifting devices you can kind of put on hold, you have a request for, but it is not mandatory for this public assembly area. Assistant listening devices you can kind of put on hold, you have a request for, but it is not mandatory for this public assembly area, because we currently don't have amplified sound at the current time.
Well, you know, taking into consideration how many people really would use it. I mean, I don't want to, you know, exclude anybody.
Which one? Which, which, which proposal? The amplified sound or the live streaming?
So, the, the live streaming can also offer a feature to where they can probably utilize their own headphone set and listen to the meeting right then and there as kind of like an assisted personal listening device versus utilizing our current audio.
Yeah, can broadcast like a Bluetooth signal so that they could listen to it in their personal.
I meant, I meant, like, I, I listen to YouTube radio while I mow my grass, right, and it's just utilizing the internet. Uh, in regards to whatever's live on the internet at that time, uh, it just goes directly into my own headset that I'm utilizing.
Were we required to have meetings live?
Uh, by, no.
Or not?
We are not required.
Okay.
To be live. This has just been a big request that I've been kind of tabling since July.
Well, that bid was like 40 grand, wasn't it?
Uh, so that is for the assisted listening and audible in regards to amplification. Uh, the live meeting, this was one of the first quotes that I got in regards to that, utilizing our Wi-Fi signal once we upgrade that.
I mean, I would still like to see it happen, and I'm much more comfortable with a $6,000.
So, how much does that include the upgrading to?
For the live streaming?
Yeah.
The, the live stream.
You said, just said you had to upgrade our Wi-Fi, right?
That's an additional in regards to everyone in here utilizing our public Wi-Fi, kind of draws down the system. If we want to expand those Wi-Fi capabilities, it's roughly $1,200, $1,176.41.
So, the total expenditure would be?
Six, six thousand. For live streaming and the expanded Wi-Fi.
But it also.
Which will also then cover. Yes.
They can also listen, because it'll be.
$5,880, and I can get it done relatively timely with the contractors ready available.
Checks a few boxes.
You should have kept that half percent tax.
Yeah.
He's unincorporated, so we wouldn't apply, can't use it here.
Why?
So where would we propose the money to come from?
I did not look into that, trustee.
We could probably, maybe we could pull it out of legal.
We have not.
I have quarter percent.
I did, yeah, I didn't look into that.
Money offered here. Amen.
I do have.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Can I, do we need to make a motion to approve that expenditure?
I don't want a new motion, is that now?
No motion.
Do it, spend it, Vinnie, spend it like you got it.
No motion.
Consensus, continue.
Consensus.
No motion.
And substantial improvements moving forward with the school district on that designated highway path of Spring Grove Road. We will be moving forward with that this year. So, we are aiming for the third to fourth week of October after having that conversation.
And that's for a setback off Spring Grove?
That is for, yes, the path to be 15 additional feet setback off. School district does not want to allocate that property in regards to make dots right away, but we will just, it'll just be open vegetation that they would be responsible for with promoting. In exchange for that, though, the lease agreement that's in place for this year and next year, that's already signed by the local farmer there, the village of Johnsworth would have to pay that difference in regards to the roughly 1,800 linear feet of taking in regards to the acreage calculation.
Because we're using the acreage, we would pay for it instead of the farmer, which is how much?
I'm sorry, I didn't have that prepared, but one second.
Don't be going to this.
That's the, on highway vehicle path that goes from Sweetwater.
Is the school district paying taxes on that property?
So, come out, you know where the school property driveway is?
Yeah, but they're collecting revenue from the farmer?
Dutch Green Estates.
Correct.
Okay. And then go around the outside.
Oh, okay.
Because they don't, because of the accident they had, they don't, everybody just run it forward.
I would throw my question there, like.
Hold on. No, there was an accident in the field.
Oh, really?
If you remember that, man, that's probably two years ago already.
Oh, okay.
But it's.
There we go.
Back into some exciting.
In a camera, throw in a camera.
In a camera.
So, we're going to add a quarter, 10%.
So, like, church. Like, you come on Dutch Green Estates, you go straight across.
Uh, $975 to cover 2025 and 2026 approximately for 1,800 linear feet of taking in regards to the acreage calculation.
Some license plates, probably.
Yeah, we would pull directly from that fund. Obviously, the stone materials, uh, that, that will probably add up, because we have to put that path in that runs north, and then we'll pick up the path that's currently running on the north side of the property east to west.
So, I know a trucker that'll donate that. I just want to see if he was awake.
Roughly five tons of limestone screening, uh, bills at $135.
Before noon tomorrow. And how much is the third week of October?
Uh, how much is $135?
Eight-inch compact.
That was a lot more mid.
Got one minute, I, I got my tonnage calculation.
And I'll cover the end of this year, next year's rent.
Nine hundred cents of dollars.
Paid to that farmer.
For two years.
For a year and three years.
275 tons.
How much per? That's about how much was displaced with the Titanic.
Yeah. We can either, we can either get multiple loads of 20 tons delivered directly on-site, or we could pick up five tons at a time from a local landscaper in the area that kind of has a good rate of ore.
Price percentage?
He's sleeping this time.
I know, I just go five tons plus 135, whoever does that math, we'll pick it up ourselves.
55 tons, then?
275 tons.
7, 750.
Eight foot wide.
7, 750 bucks.
For, for CA6, right?
Uh, this is, this is limestone screening. I, you would know better on that terminology from.
We could get gravel screenings, right? And I'd still rather see screenings. Is that, we use like a grade A limestone up here?
That's what we're using out there, that same.
Tell you what, Scott, you call and get your ex-employer to give me 275 tons of gravel of the screenings, and I'll haul them for nothing.
You get a quarter percent tax pass tonight, I'll do it.
I can't do that.
I, Vinnie, I, to me, the piece we have from the community club going back to where you want the shops back to there.
That's the same material we'll be using.
I mean, it's a grade A limestone, it's a three-quarter crush, what fines. I mentioned it to Dave, they're concerned that heavy rains and water would wash these screenings away. That was one of the reasons they didn't want to use it. Even though it's a lot cheaper, and you roll it once, and with the weight we have going over that, I think we'd be better off, but.
So, do we need to level that off to fix that?
Yeah, anybody that goes that way will tell you that.
All the forest reserve paths and everything are all screened, they're not CA6.
Right. You just get three-quarter rock, that's fractured.
Screens are much less expensive.
This may be a weird question, but are grindings ever in play?
Yes, uh, we, we have used roadway grindings before. We use them on our shoulders that meet compaction rating. It's not ideal for knocking in.
They're going to move, even though they initially meet compaction rate of 90 to 95%, they will move when it gets cold. They roll, and when it's too hot, Rick will tell you, they start moving on.
How scary is?
No, that's.
I see a clarification, are we using the right stuff or the wrong stuff?
It depends on what you're built.
Yeah, for these paths, I think we should use screenings.
If you build a path through, you're going to build a path over grass, basically?
Correct.
But, but the forest preserve difference, I mean, I guess it gives pretty much useless of screenings. The other, the other thing about that is it keeps the rocks, the, the farmers won't care if the screenings, which is basically limestone sands, gets into their crop, right, because it doesn't affect anything. But if they start getting three-quarter rocks in it, they're going to.
And that's only, that's just a 3/16th, a very small fracture. Like Rick says, if it gets wet and goes away, it'll dissipate. Farmers never going to have any problems with that.
So, what I said, limestone screenings were staying with us.
I would, or.
What you really should do is put three to four inches of, of CA6 and then cover it with the screens, but I mean, how much money you want to.
Yeah, that's, it gets expensive, and I don't know how much of that we really want to put in there.
But, the, uh, the baseball fields, Tiger Field, right, for years and years and years, there's been that warning track on the back that's screened. That's, that is the material we're talking about putting on the path, that material. That's, that's what we're talking about for you guys that don't know what it is. It's basically the warning track that's on Tiger Field, right, Scott?
Yes, that's correct. And Rick has donated that for many years. Like I said, that's why I'm thinking him for his path.
So, but again, that, that path has been budgeted, right? Have you already budgeted?
Yes.
That comes out of our golf card.
Right, but for the material, too?
Yeah, it comes out of our golf card.
Yeah. That was.
Exactly how it should be, I love it.
No, it was just more of an update, I didn't know it was going to come on. We're, we're definitely moving forward.
Consensus.
Yes.
Yeah.
Consensus.
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 We're not voting on anything anymore, it's all consensus.
Just let it keep going, they just keep rolling over.
Just everybody.
So, now we got, you know, Scott getting that 1%, and Rick getting those screens, we're all good. Yeah, going up to 1%, yeah, okay. Anyways, anybody else got anything on their, uh, projects that they're supposed to be working on?
I don't know if you want to give a brief on the golf cart sign, or the golf, golf course signs?
Golf cart signs are all spoken for, and, uh, we're pretty much, uh, collecting the money for them, so we'll be on the golf course next year with the advertisement of the businesses that bought them, so.
Nice.
They're all, all spoken for, pretty much paid for. So, that's it, right? And there's some work.
They're delivered.
Oh, they are here?
Yeah. We actually test fitted one on hole number one.
It would have been nice, wouldn't it?
Hole number one was, uh.
No, the, the sponsor sign's not on there, the actual team signature signage. No more decal on the posts.
We're going to have the sponsors on, so.
Yes, yeah.
But we didn't get any of that.
We did not, we only have two that says advertise here.
All right.
Are we moving forward with cameras? Is that what we decided? Oh, nature, nature. Um, just a quick website update, it's stopped and running, and we're working through things as we come across them. Vinnie is working through things as he comes across them, so. Did you get a response about the e-blast that's?
I did. Let me just give it to you real quick. On Friday, September 9th, it says, and I quote from the liaison, multiple phone calls, I'm probably on the, the blacklist at this point. The issue has been allocated to the appropriate member of the team. They will respond with an update as soon as possible.
Was that the 9th?
That was on the 19th.
19th, okay.
Yeah, that, I pretty, uh, I mean, I could share it with you, the Vinnie-ism came out in me in regards to itemized detail.
I think they're still reading it.
The issues I've been having in regards to the e-blast, moving forward with the e-notify and how this alert message process works, it doesn't go anywhere. And when you actually click on the e-notify and you click in the alert page, uh, I can't edit that document, I don't know what that coding is, but it doesn't even have our correct address down at the bottom of that page.
Anything else you want to say that doesn't work?
I'm trying to fix it.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll do it.
Second.
Okay.
Third, fourth.
On the roll, trustee Morris, trustee Hitt, trustee Sillings, trustee Manalman.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.